Standing up there at the podium now, let's listen in.
As Mayor Johnson prepares for this first budget address of his tenure as mayor of Chicago, we take a look at the city by some of the numbers right now. He has a very large budget gap to fill, $538 million to start. He has 1,700 vacant positions to fill with the Chicago Police Department, a task that has been challenging for mayors who have preceded him.
A lot of questions about whether property taxes would go up in this situation. He has already said that will not be the case. We'll see what else is laid out here in this budget address that we've been looking forward to here. Laura Washington is with us as well, watching this. Laura, anything that you're looking out for?
Well, I'm looking out to see how well he delivers on his progressive promises. You know, he was elected primarily on the strength of the progressive vote, progressive organizations. They're going to be looking for some radical change. I'm expecting that this budget will not be as radical as they like, but they are going to be watching closely and seeing that he delivers on his promises.
Laura, hard to deliver on your promises when you've already spent $300 million in order to accommodate asylum seekers who have been bused to Chicago over the course of the last year or so. Where does future monies come from in order to accommodate the continuing influx of migrants?
Well, the administration has suggested there's going to be efficiencies. They're going to try to look for budget cuts in terms of personnel. The big question is where those cuts will come in. In terms of personnel, one of the big promises he made was not to cut police services, so we'll be looking at that closely. He's going to have to come up with new revenues, though, and he promised a lot of changes, particularly in terms of taxing the rich, a real estate transaction tax, which is sort of in play, a financial transaction tax. We'll have to see whether or not he's going to tap into those really major, but also controversial revenue sources.
And do you think he will, Laura? I know we're going to wait and find out together, but what direction, what options does he actually have?
Well, for example, the financial transaction tax, he has touted that, although he's been less vocal about it in recent weeks, but that is something that the General Assembly, the Elmo General Assembly, would have to weigh in on, and also the government would have to weigh in on it. And they've suggested that they don't think that that's a good thing for the city right now. There's also the hotel tax, taxing hotels and other related tourism-type services. And the business community is pushing back against that because they say, "We're finally getting the hotels back on their feet. We're finally getting tourism up. This is the last thing we want to do right now." So the question is, how far does he want to go in terms of pushing back on that resistance?
And tourism, of course, critical to the city's revenue stream. Laura, we're going to tap back into City Hall now, where they are saying the Pledge of Allegiance. We expect Chicago Mayor Brandon Johnson's address to get underway momentarily.
Thank you all very much. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Juan Rios of Chicago Tabernacle.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. God bless you guys. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment of silence, like to have a moment of silence. We all know of the conflict that's happening in the Middle East, and if you guys would join me in a moment of silence to acknowledge what's going on. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you, Father. I want to thank you for this precious gift of life that you have given us, Lord. And before I continue, I want to ask for your perfect peace, oh God, to be in the Middle East, oh God. I pray, oh God, that you would stop the conflict, oh God, that is occurring right now, oh Lord. I pray that you would touch the hearts of each and every person that's involved in the conflict, Lord, and that you would bring peace to them, Lord, that you would fill them with your perfect peace, oh God, and they would come to their senses and just stop the violence. I want to thank you all again for allowing me to be here with you guys this morning. All the men, Cruz for the invitation, Mayor Johnson, city council members, I want to thank you all for having me. And right now, Lord, I just want to ask, oh God, that you would give clarity, insight, wisdom, oh Father, to each and every person here, oh God, as they decide on the things that need to be decided on. Lord, I pray, oh God, that you would allow them wisdom, oh God. Your word says that it is better to gain wisdom and insight than silver and gold, oh Lord. So I pray that you would give guidance, direction, oh God, to each and every person here, Lord, as they make the decisions that carry the weight upon our great city. I pray, oh Lord, that you would give them a sense of clarity, oh God, of guidance and direction, oh Lord, that they would be able to push the proper agenda forward, oh God. For the welfare of this people of the city of Chicago, Lord, it is you that's sovereign, and I thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve this great city, oh God. In your name, I lift all of these things up to you. Amen.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, please read the call for today's special meeting.
The following call for a special meeting of the City Council was filed in my office on Thursday, October 5th, 2023, at 11:24 a.m. Dear Mrs. Valencia, I hereby call a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago to be convened at 10 a.m. on Wednesday, October 11, 2023, in the City Council Chamber and City Hall for the following purposes and for no other purpose whatsoever: to receive the executive budget for the year beginning in January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024, and the mayor's budget message relating thereto, and to receive and place on file a communication from the Budget Director regarding estimated levies, and to consider a resolution calling for publication of the 2024 executive budget, setting the date, time, and place of the public hearing on the executive budget. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor.
Thank you very much. This is the time of the meeting for public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Ursula Allen.
I live in the 7900 block on South... Oh, I can't think. You have to kind of bear with me, because this is new to me. I live in the 79th House Block on... Let's see. Can't even think. But anyway, my problem is dealing with the migrants that came in. I live in a building that has three, it's a three-flat. I live on the second floor. The migrants moved to the first floor, and apartment in the basement. I cannot live there. They play music 24 hours a day. They're very rude. They're very disrespectful. I'm a senior citizen who worked for the Chicago Boys of Education for 47 years. Every day went to work. I think I should have some kind of something done. I have went to the police station. The police tells me that noise is not a crime. I've been to the alderman's office. They have done nothing. I've been there. I've been to the senator. I've been to the police station. I've been everywhere trying to get some kind of relief. These people get up at 7:00, they go to bed at about 4:00 in the morning, and they get up again around 12 o'clock, and they start the music banging all day long. And then, when they wake, when they go to sleep, I'm up, but they don't have no noise, so they can sleep all day long. They sleep all day. They wake up around 12 o'clock, and then they start the same, the same music all day long, like I said. I called everybody. I have had nobody to give me any relief. I think that as a senior citizen, I should be able to live peacefully.
Could you make sure they mute so we can hear the testimony?
Okay. I live on Winchester, 7900 block on South Winchester in the 17th Ward, which I have got no, nothing from nobody. Nobody has said nothing to help me. I live alone. And the first night that these people came, they had a party that went on from 8:00 at night to 8:00 in the morning. Police called. I have called the police at least 10 to 12 times. They have been not. One policeman came to my house. One came, one night, but I would just like some help. I don't, and then the landlady said, "I should move if I ain't happy." So I just need somebody to help me find, to stop this noise, so I can get some sleep at night. I do not sleep. They play music till 4:00 in the morning, then they go to sleep, sleep half of the morning, then wake up at 12, start the same thing over again. And she says it's about eight of them there. If it's eight of them, there is 15 of them live there. This is what I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Melvin Bailey.
Hey, thank you, City Council, for hearing me again. So when we talk about this budget, we need to do a forensic audit on every department here in the city of Chicago. I guarantee we can find some of this money for this.
So, of course, for watching a public comment, I know if you tuned in, you may not have tuned in for this. The budget address is coming up a little bit later on. So in the meantime, want to bring in Laura Washington again. Laura, part of the procedure, of course, before we actually hear the address itself. And you may know a little bit about this. What are we watching right now?
We're watching public testimony. Every city council will have, brings an opportunity for the public to step forward and testify about whatever issues are on their minds. And there's, so there's usually a limited amount of time for that. So this is a, this is a formal city council meeting, so that's what you're seeing this morning.
Got it.
Laura, how long does this commentary period typically take to come to completion? I'm guessing there are a lot of people there with a lot to say.
There are a lot of people, and they will limit, they usually have a cap on the number of people that can speak, so I don't think it's going to go on for more than 15, 20 minutes at the most. I thought it was interesting that the first comment was from the retired woman from the South Side, who has some obvious frustrations with the migrant situation. It sounds like she has migrants living in her building, refugees who are being housed in Chicago, who've come from down the border. And this, I think, is indicative of the biggest problem that the mayor is facing right now, not only in terms of his style of governing and his approach to governing, but also in terms of balancing the budget. The migrant issue and the cost of that are going to be front and center, and I think you're going to hear more from him about that during his speech today.
And one of the items that has been alluded to is Chicago Mayor Brandon Johnson's desire to increase the real estate transfer tax for transactions over $1 million. Now, the real estate transfer tax under his plan would go down for 96% of transactions, real estate transfers, but those larger transactions don't just affect, you know, the rich, so to speak. It affects larger property owners, you know, who own apartment buildings, and they've started to push back against this already.
Right, and that, and there has been some compromise around that issue because of that pushback. Originally, his plan was to tax at the same level, everything over $1 million. Now there's going to be incremental taxes that are going to be applied, but you're right. It's not just going to be wealthy people, it's going to be people who own maybe multiple units in the city. This is important to the mayor because he sees this as a way of addressing homelessness. And part of his whole campaign mantra was, "We need everyone to pay their equal share." And he believes that the wealthier folks in Chicago, particularly property owners, have not paid enough, and that the working class and poor are paying the price.
The mayor's office put out a schedule for the day. They called this budget recommendations that he's putting out. So what's the next step here, even after he delivers this address, Laura? Does City Council, do aldermen have a say in this?
Absolutely. And the aldermen have been, because obviously there were budget hearings and consultations with the aldermen before today, but there's going to be a whole series of meetings, community meetings, city council hearings, that are going to lead up to the final vote on the budget, which the council will have to approve. That's expected to happen sometime in mid-November, but it has to happen by the end of the year. And there's going to be much consultation, and I'm sure that there's going to be some revisions and some change and some compromises in the budget that he's presenting today. The aldermen are going to definitely want to have their say, and some of them have already been raising alarm bells about some of the suggestions and some of the challenges that he is bringing forth today.
And one of the challenges of being in his role, period, is typically pushback from all sides. For those who voted Mayor Brandon Johnson into office, they have been eagerly awaiting a budget proposal that includes progressive priorities. Do you expect that they'll be disappointed?
I don't know if they'll be disappointed, but I think that they will be expecting more than he will be able to deliver today. He had some pretty lofty promises during his campaign. He had a number, we're hearing a lot about the real estate transaction tax, but he had four or five other sources of revenue that he was planning on pushing as a candidate, including, you know, taxing financial transactions in the city. He was talking about a commuter tax. He was talking about a number of other hotel tax, a number of other taxes that he sees as evening the playing field. I'm not sure if he's going to be able to deliver all those today. So those progressive supporters of his who are looking for radical change and a radical new way of looking at new revenues for the city, I think he's not going to go that far.
You just mentioned that he's looking for ways to build and grow revenue for the city. We've also been talking about the migrant issue that we have here in the city and how it's being dealt with. Where does that money continue to come from? Tanya, you mentioned the number earlier, $300 million and counting, as migrants continue to arrive. How do you fund it? How do you continue to fund it? And where does the money come from?
The expectation right now is that it's going to cost the city 300, something like $350 million by the end of this calendar year to respond to that. That number's probably low because we are not able to control the influx of migrants and the number of folks that are coming to us. So the mayor, the mayor hasn't really suggested any new revenue sources, other than what he's already put on the table. What he has been calling for repeatedly is asking the governor, Governor Prisker, and the president, President Joe Biden, to step up and bring more resources and more support. So I expect you're going to hear him repeat that argument again in his speech today, but so far, we haven't heard any concrete response from the governor or the president. As a matter of fact, Governor Prisker has suggested there's probably not going to be any new revenues coming from Springfield in this session.
Laura, that $350 million projected cost to continue to house and care for migrants in the city of Chicago, is that figure factored into the mayor's budget that he's proposing today? Or is it presumed that the money would come from the federal government?
That's unclear. He has said that he needs more support and more help, but he has also set aside, and you might recall that the City Council voted on a revenue source several months ago, was close to $50 million, in new funding for the migrant issue. It's not clear what he's going to be presenting in his budget today, but he's presented a lot of lofty plans, particularly these migrant tent camps that he wants to set up, this large contract that he just signed with an organization that's going to do that setup. It's not clear how much money he has in the hopper to actually cover those costs, or if he's going to be looking for new monies, either from Springfield and Washington, or if he's going to find some other revenue sources in the budget. That's what we're going to be hearing today. Where is he going to find revenue sources to balance his huge deficit?
Maybe from us. And I think that's a good question, right?
Well, that is a good question, Terrell. But, you know, he has said, he has said definitively up until this moment, that he has no plans to raise property taxes. So as far as property taxes from individual homeowners are concerned, that is, I don't expect that to happen today.
And then you wonder how far deeper into the hole do you get not having that source of revenue with all of these expenses that, you know, are presumably out of the city's control. You can't stop the buses from coming. Laura, 1,700 vacant positions in the Chicago Police Department, new police superintendent recently voted in. Larry Snelling, of course, worked in training new recruits for many years before he made his way. He ascended to this position that he sits in now. How instrumental will he be in helping the mayor to figure out, how do you attract enough candidates in order to be able to fill those vacancies at CPD?
Well, he is, as you know, an insider, a lifelong, career-long insider at the Chicago Police Department, so he understands policing from the inside out. He came up from the streets. He's been a commander in Inglewood. He knows what is required for police officers and for training. So I'm not clear what his plan is on that, but I think he clearly understands that we have to fill these vacancies. The challenge is, as you point out, Tanya, training and also finding the right people who are willing to take the job. But a bigger challenge is finding the money to fill those positions. The biggest hole in any city budget is always personnel, and that's where the government's going to meet the road in terms of filling these vacant positions in the police department. He's talked about hiring, in his campaign, he talked about hiring more police detectives, and that's something that he probably can do if he can finance it. But detectives are not, those are not the street folks on the streets. Those are not the majority of the vacancies that we're looking at right now. So the big question is, is he going to put some money into filling those vacancies? And what is he and his superintendent's plan for finding folks to fill those vacancies?
Laura, just hang on for one sec. I think we just take a minute. Want to see what's going on in council chambers right now. It's been a second. Okay, so they're still doing public comment right now.
All right. Good morning, everybody.
And there that is. Very, very interesting to hear some of the issues that have been brought up. Of course, the migrant crisis that the city was facing is one of the first things that we heard this morning.
Do we want to listen in right now?
I am very curious, to be honest with you. Can we just for a little bit?
...is, what it entails, but now we're at a critical point. We are fortunate the murder has been down in the city of Chicago, and it's trending down. That is a beautiful thing. However, we also have to acknowledge that Chicago has the most mass shootings in the country. Our city does. We also have to acknowledge that seven-year-old child was just shot last week, that over five teenagers were shot last week. And we're in a situation where young people are being impacted daily by gun violence. And we're not just talking about them being victims of gun violence, we're talking about the trauma that goes on because they've lost a family member. We expect them to go to school. We expect parents to go to work, but there are no true trauma-informed support systems. And the Peace Book will provide that. It is an app that people can get on to find out where peacekeeping is happening in their community. It's an app where they can find out where resources are. So if they need mental health care, that'll be provided, like for treating that trauma, right? And once we bring Chicago home, we can look on that app to find out where we can get some stable housing. So those are the resources that we are demanding that our young people have access to. Right now, there's no youth-centered employment where young people can practice restorative justice throughout the District of CPS, where young people can leave the juvenile detention center and have immediately immediate employment to become peacekeepers in that community. That's what we need. We need young people invested in. They need to have these jobs, these resources, and the ability to be the arbitrators of peace in that community. We criminalize young people. We hold them accountable when they are 16, 13, and they're carjacking or committing other types of harm in the community. All of a sudden, we adultify them, right? But when we say they should be leaders and they should be leading the charge to create peace in their communities, all of a sudden, we don't look at them as being able to facilitate that, and that's not right. So please, in this 2024 budget, we want to see enough money carved out to employ young people, to hire over 10,000 people if possible, to become peacekeepers in that community, and have those direct resources so we can make sure that Chicago is truly a safe city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Jessica Jackson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This, I know today is a budget meeting, and I know a lot of money will be given to this thing of immigration, and I know that it'll get a spin put on it, that this is about being a sanctuary city and about being a welcoming city, and it'll be said that it's for asylum seekers, all of which is not true. This money that's being taken from black communities, the South Side and the West Side, moving out people from communities, moving out people from field houses, moving children from field houses, like that situation on the West Side with the Munson Park, I hope I'm saying that name right. That's disgraceful. The fact that senior citizens are being displaced for immigrants is disgraceful. The fact that this city can't come up with the money for economic development for black communities is disgraceful. And to have your deputy mayor say that it's, that we need to look at, remember that these are human beings, as if black people need to be reminded of what being treated like a human being in America is, when we got a 3/5 clause in the Constitution and considered us property, and we got to be told and reminded about being human? That's a disgrace. Now, I asked you, Mayor Johnson, to deal with my mother's estate in probate. Am I not human? Is my housing situation not critical? You're going to have your assistant call me? When I told you this is a problem in the black community, the probate division is stealing our property with the help of the Public Administration Office? I told you, those white judges in the probate division, Judge Gallagher, Judge Terrence McGuire, Chief Justice Timothy Evans himself, and you didn't do nothing about it, but you want us to be sympathetic to human, to people coming across the border? That's well-bodied, able people? You want to give work permits to them and watch people here not work so that they could come here and undercut the wages of Americans? Because that's what's going to happen, right? Take care of your own. New police chief officer, go over there to that probate division and get them white, crooked judges. Deal with white-collar crime.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for your comments. Our next speaker is Jermaine Dixon.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Jermaine Dixon. I'm a CNA at Mount Sinai Hospital. I'm a union steward at Mount Sinai, and I'm speaking on behalf of 90,000 healthcare workers. Okay, today, I'm nervous right now, y'all. Bear with me. Okay, I'm taking care, well, I'm representing 90,000 home care workers, healthcare workers, whatever you want to call it. And we take care of all different types of walkers of life. And I'm so nervous today. I am supporting Mayor Johnson because I know that you can't do everything at one time and one day overnight. And I hope that this budget is enough money to take care of everybody, as well as the migrants, because they are human, just like we are. And everybody needs a chance. I was just defending the mayor the other day because they were saying, like, he's here and he's accepting all these people over here, and he's forgetting about the people that's already here. I don't think that that's the case. What I do know is that God has the last say over everything. That's all of us, because we all are people. The thing is, we just need to get some type of thing so that can help everybody. So when they start building these shelters and everything for these people, they need to include the people that was already here homeless. So it won't be no disrepute or nobody mad about anything or anything like that. And another thing, like, I gave the story before that I've been homeless before, and this money is to help people, to give us a chance, because everybody is not the same. Some people do want a chance. Some people do want the help to accept it. They, from where I was growing up, they said it's supposed to be the land of the free. So it's supposed to be free for everybody. So if it's enough money, so we need to keep this money together to keep the money, where to be enough for everybody, not just for one set of people or trying to help one set of people, or these people on this side, or these people on that side. Last week, I did some door knocking for the representative in the state senate, and I learned some things last week that I never knew. We got communities that's like caged in, where you can only get into the community one way, and then you have to come back out the same way to get out of there. Our communities could be the same way, so the peace could be everywhere, not just down the street, because it's like Ashland and, I mean, Roosevelt and Racine on the other side of Walgreens is horrible. On this side of Racine and Roosevelt, it's like you went into a new, another town. It's totally different. When me and the guy walked over there and we door-knocked, people were so different and like, this world is sad. Like, people don't care about nothing. We just need to keep this money and so we can help everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Yolanda Judah.
Good morning, City Council.
Good morning.
Make sure you get every single word on record. I could stand here all day and tell you how bad your politics are, but I won't. Instead, I'll tell you... Instead, I'll tell you the reality of Palestinians, a reality you try to deny and cover up in hopes of protecting a dystopian society that is Israel. The illegal state of Israel has done more harm to the world than good, countless horrendous acts carried out by the Israeli government all over the world. But everyone seems to turn a blind eye, just like Councilmember Deborah Silverstein. Where are you, Deborah? There you are? You have said, you've said, "I have family that lives in Israel that are being called up to serve in the army, putting their lives in harm's way after this brutal, brutal attack." Did you know, Deborah, that the illegal state of Israel forces every person with Israeli citizenship to join the army after high school, teaching how to murder and displace Palestinians, trained with such unethical morals?
As we take a pause from the public commentary period that precedes Mayor Brandon Johnson's budget address, his first of his term in office, we're going to loop Laura Washington back in. Laura, one of the first people that we heard from was speaking about gun violence specifically in the city. He talked about homicide rates being down. According to the city's on-site, homicide victimizations are down about 10% year-to-date so far. Any progress is good progress, but he rightly points out, we still have many, many gun violence victims in the city who do not die from their injuries and mass shootings in the city. Public safety, of course, going to be something that Mayor Brandon Johnson is going to be very highly scrutinized for. So how do you think he'll address that in this budget address?
Well, Tanya, you know, his mantra and his philosophy has always been around treatment and around care and around anti-violence initiatives. His motto was treatment, not trauma. So he is going to address the violence issues in the city by calling for more mental health services, calling for more anti-violence initiatives, more investments in that area. He is going to try to, I think he's promised he's going to reopen the mental health, mental health care clinics. That probably won't happen in this budget, but I think he's going to begin taking steps toward that. And he's going to, he's already working, and the police department is working to shift police officers away from 911 calls and other issues that are related to mental health rather than related to violent crime. So I think that you're going to hear him talk a lot about that in his speech, shifting resources and shifting attention and philosophy about how to fight crime, to care and to treatment rather than to criminalization.
Yeah. While the homicide rate is down, Laura, important to note that robbery victimizations are up almost 44% in the city this year, something that is afflicting all neighborhoods in the city. Certainly, West Side and South Side neighborhoods have expressed in public forums that this has long been a problem in their neighborhoods. The increase is particularly high on the West Sides and Northwest Sides, sorry, Northwest and North Sides over the course of the last year or so. And so that, too, will be watched closely.
Mm-hmm. It's, on two things, Laura, it's interesting just to watch public comment and how public comment reflects so many of the issues and honestly, so many of the things that the mayor is going to have to tackle in this budget address anyway today. And then also, of course, Chicago's a global city. People here, all over the world, and come to visit. Economic development, as soon as you start talking about the downtown business corridor is a really big topic. Has the mayor talked about that at all in terms of being a priority? And what are the plans potentially for any downtown development?
Well, he has been a big cheerleader, as you know, for the city. He has probably been at every special event, at every parade, and every concert that we saw throughout the summer in the city. And it was a real strong, positive summer in terms of economic development, in terms of hotel occupancy, in terms of tourism, especially in the downtown core. He's been cheering that on. I think the business community would like to see him invest more in those arenas. They would like to see him, there's been some suggestion that he might institute some kind of a hotel tax or raise a hotel tax or other taxes that might affect tourism. And there's going to be a lot of pushback if that does happen in the speech. I think, though, he sees the city is, the core of the city is being an important economic driver, but not at the expense of the neighborhoods. So he's going to, I think, in this speech, talk more about the neighborhoods and what the needs are there than, you know, and he's been criticized by the business community, particularly around, most recently around the new tax, the new minimum wage that's been for TIF workers, which was just approved by the city council last week. Business community, restaurant industry in particular, feels that that is going to be a negative for business growth at a time when restaurants and other businesses are really starting to recover from the pandemic. He has said that he feels that equity is important, particularly equity for restaurant owners, and so he pushed ahead with that. So there's going to be some tension, I think, in this budget between how much money we put in the downtown core area, what we do to invest and support those businesses, and what we do for working-class folks and folks in the neighborhoods.
Do you think the city can sustain increased taxes? I know he'll get pushback on this, but when it comes to an increased hotel tax and taxes on tourism, Chicago, of course, just voted best big city in America to travel to by Conde Nast. I mean, we're very proud of that. Do you risk putting a dent in it?
Of course. And that's what you're hearing from the chambers of commerce and the restaurant industry right now. We are recovering. We have a lot to offer as a city. We have an international reputation that is attracting tourism, that is attracting visitors to the city. Last thing we want to do is start to reverse that by making it much more expensive for the hotel operators, restaurants, and other service providers in the downtown area to operate. So the mayor has consulted with those people. He's had many conversations, he will tell you, with folks that represent that industry. And that minimum wage decision that was made last week was made in consultation with the restaurant industry. The Restaurant Association wasn't happy with the outcome, but there was a compromise there. So I think that they're going to continue to have those conversations, and the business community is going to continue to push back on any attempts to raise taxes, raise revenues off their backs.
You know, Laura, to his credit, Mayor Johnson has always said he is interested in speaking with all parties involved in any negotiation or affected by any decision that's made at the city level, and he's held true to that.
He calls himself a collaborator, collaborator and a compromiser. He says that goes back to his days as a community organizer, realizing that you cannot work in a vacuum, you cannot work alone. And in every speech I've seen him give, he always brings up the fact that he wants to work with others, that he can't do this alone, that he needs to reach out and wants to reach out to other interests throughout the city. So that's his mantra, that's the way he operates, that's his message, and I'll be looking to see whether or not that continues in the speech today.
We'll certainly find out together. So if you're just tuning in, we're waiting for the mayor's budget address, public comment going on over in council chambers right now. And boy, those comments have really run the gamut in the last 20 to 30 minutes or so. Do we want to hang on here? Do we want to dip back in? What do you guys say we do? Got it. All right. So we'll dip back in the public comment, let you listen in. Immediately following, we expect the mayor's budget address. If you don't see us again, it's because we're actually on TV doing the news at 11:00 a.m. So we'll let you listen in, and we will cut back in with anything that's noteworthy in the meantime.
We got a good, healthy block, love. We keep our streets up, we cut our grass. But those people that came in there, it's like somebody told them that you don't have to respect black folks. I believe that's gotta be what they told them, said, "You don't got to respect them black folk. You send them over there, and you can do anything you want to do with them." They doing everything that you could imagine. I mean, it's ridiculous. They got them young girls, they come over there, they let the windows up. Now, I live next door. If you let your windows up, they let the windows up, the screens up and everything. I can look at the young girls behind, laying in the bed next door. I got grandkids that live on that block. If something needs to be done. I went to the Alderman Curtis, talked to him. We talked, went over to the church, and that church was full of people talking about these migrants. I'm not against no migrant. I just want to live where I've been paying rent and bought that home to stay there, and I want to do it in peace. And they not letting us do it, and we don't got nobody to go see. So, Mayor, who do I go to see when I voted for you, and I can't get no help? Talk to me. Somebody tell me something. It's ridiculous. Talk back to me. I'm talking to you. You can't get nothing done in this town unless you got some money or somebody slick to talk to. I need some help now. I'm through. Help me.
Thank you for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you for the public comments. I do, would like to first recognize that we have some individuals that are visiting with us today. Former state senator Ricky Hinden is here. We usually clap for people, so we'll... The Cook County Commissioner of the First District, Tara Stamps, is here. I see that Senator Robert Peters is also here. We also have State Senator Lakeisha Collins is here. And finally, for those of you who believe that my suit is tighter today, it's not. I've been doing more push-ups at the request of Alderman Chico. Thank you very much. I'm doing my best to look swole. Communications.
Communication, a communication from His Honor, the Mayor, to the Honorable, the City Council of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with proposed 2024 budget recommendations. Your favorable consideration of this item will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, have also received communication from Annette Guzman, Budget Director, dated October 11, 2023, pursuant to Section 1860 of the Illinois Truth and Taxation Law regarding the 2024 amended aggregate property tax levy which is placed on file.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you all for being here today. During my campaign for mayor, I spoke about the challenging fiscal reality of our city and my vision for investing in people and communities. The budget that I am releasing today reflects those challenges and our opportunities to begin the critical investments that are necessary to build a better, stronger, and more safer Chicago. As we begin this work, I am thinking about my own family, especially my father, a pastor, a union laborer, raising 10 children and taking in foster children, working multiple jobs to keep us fed and sheltered. It is families like mine that I want to uplift with this budget. Families that I served as a teacher in Cabrini-Green, USA, families that stood alongside of me when we fought to keep public schools and mental health clinics open, families that have been driven out of Chicago over the last decade by budgets that under-invested in their communities while over-taxing their households with regressive property taxes. And I made a commitment to invest in people without balancing this budget on the backs of working families. And that is why I'm proud that this budget makes strategic investments in people and communities without raising base property taxes. It is a promise that I have made as a candidate and one that I'm keeping as mayor. This budget and multiple budgets to come, it's the people's budget. Investing in people is at the heart of this budget and my administration, because I, like so many Chicagoans, know what disinvestment looks and feels like. Many of you know that my wife and I are raising our three children in Austin on the West Side. We love our community, and we are proud to embrace its unique spirit each and every day. But we know that communities on the South and West Sides, like Austin, deserve better. And too many communities in our city are shackled by disinvestment and the lack of opportunity and basic amenities. But the good news today is, this is the city of Chicago, and here, anything is possible. More than 100 years ago, when the Chicago River flowed into Lake Michigan, contaminating the drinking water and jeopardizing, jeopardizing the health and safety of Chicago residents, this city committed to a monumental feat of engineering and ingenuity and rerouted its mighty waters. If we can do that, then we can certainly reroute the rivers of prosperity to the banks of disinvestment. In the song "Liquid Spirit" by Gregory Porter, he says, "The people are thirsty because a man's on natural hand." Watch what happens when the people catch wind, when the water hits the banks of that hard, dry land. Now, it will take time, but we are going to see, Chicago, what happens when water hits that dry land. With each investment in our neighborhoods and our people, what I like to call the soul of Chicago, we are going to witness our city's great potential. We will ensure that every resident of this city can thrive in peace and prosperity, connected to all the resources they need, to confidently say that we all know this to be true, that this is the greatest freaking city in the world, the city of Chicago. What I present here today is just our first step towards a better, stronger, safer Chicago. While building this budget, we had to confront the fiscal headwinds that we inherited, a $538 million structural deficit driven by rising labor expenses, dwindling COVID-era federal funding, and an unprecedented escalating wave of migration that our city has never budgeted for before. We also had to confront decades of decisions and indecision that quite frankly left too many of our communities and working families behind. Leadership means telling people the truth. That is what has been missing in Chicago. Administrations have refused to be honest about the true cost of excessive property tax and fee increases, evading pension obligations year after year, and under-investing in our people, who are our city's greatest asset. But I campaigned on ending the politics of old and presenting Chicago residents an honest and transparent budget. That is what our city needs and deserves, and that is what we have done. Since releasing the budget forecast, my budget team and department heads have been hard at work developing a plan that not only closes the budget gap, but makes strategic investments in people and communities, especially those who have experienced historic disinvestment. We sought to do this through structural solutions without an over-reliance on one-time revenue, and I'm proud to say that today, we present a balanced budget of $16.6 billion. How do we do this? We prioritize $253 million in expenditure savings consisting of operational savings that do not cut service provisions but focus on efficiencies and service delivery, savings derived from better management of healthcare costs, and savings from strategic bond refinancing. This balanced budget also includes improved revenue projections of $321 million consisting of higher revenue projections based on improved economic forecasts for key taxes, increased TIF surplus collection, and the strategic use of the city's fund balance. Again, I want to underscore that we balance this budget without increasing the city's base property tax. I was elected to end this government's addiction to the regressive taxation that has pushed working families to the brink, and that begins today. One top-of-mind issue that we are responding to in the moment is the wave of new arrivals who are coming to Chicago seeking a better life in our country. More than 400 buses of asylum seekers have been sent to Chicago from the border since January of 2023. Of those, more than 300, roughly 75%, have been sent since the weekend before I was inaugurated. And currently, more than 11,000 asylum seekers are in shelters under the city's care, with nearly 4,000 at our police districts and airports waiting placement. Asylum seekers are fleeing countries destabilized for years by dangerous... Asylum seekers are fleeing countries destabilized for years by dangerous foreign policy. They see this nation and our city as a beacon of hope, like so many immigrants before. And Chicago is a place strong enough to welcome and embrace newcomers while honoring our commitments to those who are already here, especially residents of communities that have long suffered from neglect and disinvestment. I'm going to be perfectly clear. What current residents need and deserve from our city is not the same as what new arrivals need in this moment. But we must meet all demands if we truly love all people. I am fully committed to doing just that in the coming months and years ahead. You elected a mayor who loves people. Well done, Chicago. Let me also be very clear about why these buses are coming to our city at such a rapid rate. The situation was created by right-wing extremists threatened by our values and they're bent on sowing chaos and division in our city. But I don't flinch in the face of challenges, and neither does the city of Chicago. Since the first bus arrived over a year ago, we have upheld those values to welcome individuals and families seeking asylum. And I want to express my deep personal gratitude to the city's staff, our mutual aid partners and volunteers, and Chicago residents and communities that have dedicated this effort for this past year. This budget, this budget, this budget supports increased staffing within the Department of Family and Support Services and the Office of Emergency Management and Communications to manage the network of migrant shelters and to support transition to self-sufficiency. And after inheriting an expensive emergency contract, multiple expensive contracts, my administration is also finding ways to both expand space and lower the costs by renegotiating staffing and food contracts and contracting and hiring Chicagoans and Chicago businesses to provide the critical services. With the temporary protective status that's extended to Venezuelans, we are also ramping up our work authorization to enable new arrivals to work and seek pathways out of shelters. And as our city meets the moment, we continue to call upon the state of Illinois and the federal government to provide greater coordination and collaboration and resources dedicated to this issue. Now, how we support those who seek refuge in our country and in our city speaks to our values. But make no mistake, this is not just our issue. It is a state issue, a national issue, a global issue. But because we are the city of Chicago, we will continue to do our part, and we call upon all of our partners to do theirs. Now, supporting this humanitarian endeavor and investing in our residents, it's not an either-or. We can do both, and we will. To ensure we base the development of this budget on the principles of co-governance, my administration lengthened our community engagement process so that we can get the ideas from everyone here, from a broad group of stakeholders. And throughout this process, my administration held four budget engagement meetings in communities across the city, including for the first time ever, a budget summit with more than 350 young people collecting their ideas and hearing directly from them. In fact, we collected thousands of comments and responses and surveys from residents. We met with hundreds of community and issue-based advocates, and we listened to Chicago City Council caucus leaders, chairpersons, and alderpersons to better understand the critical priorities of their communities. This process has been informed by people because we know that to truly make transformative investments in people, we must do so with people. And that's what this budget does. The 2024 budget is a down payment on this administration's priorities to empower people and especially young people through economic and employment opportunities. Because our youth, our youth are our city's present and future. Scripture says, "Where your treasure is, so will your heart be also." And our heart remains with our treasure, our children. My administration will invest in young people because they are the ones who will lead us to a better, stronger, safer Chicago. As a former teacher and father of three, for me, there is no other way. We know that 59% of the workforce population under the age of 25 in this city is made up of workers of color. And we also know that unemployment among young Chicagoans, particularly our young black women, rose during the pandemic and is still lagging behind in the pandemic rebound. But to address this, on my first day in office, I signed an executive order charging the budget director to evaluate all available resources within the year's budget to reallocate to existing city-funded youth development or youth employment and enrichment programs to support additional summer positions as well as year-round employment opportunities. And within weeks of taking office, and in collaboration with our sister agencies, community organizations, the business community, we were able to increase the number of youth summer employment by 4,000 jobs, filling nearly 25,000 positions over the summer, an increase of 20% from the previous summer. But we know that's not enough. We know that's not enough because more than 46,000 young people applied for our summer programs this year. So here's what we're doing. We're dedicating more than $76 million towards youth jobs and programming in the budget, which will fund nearly 4,000 additional youth employment opportunities with the target of providing more than 28,000 opportunities for young people this summer. That's in this budget. And this is how we begin to make transformative change in the lives of our young people. Change that we will build on in future budgets. Our investments, however, are not only in youth employment opportunities, but employment opportunities for all Chicagoans. And that is why last week, the city council passed the historic one-fair wage legislation that finally ends sub-minimum wage for tip workers in an industry that black women are overwhelmingly impacted by. The city council gave black women a raise. Now, as we work to implement one-fair wage and other legislation that upholds the rights and protections of Chicago's workers, we are investing in additional staff and resources within the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protections Office of Labor Standards to ensure that they have the resources needed to defend and serve all workers. In addition, to bolster my commitment to Chicago workers, this budget establishes the Office of Labor Relations within the mayor's office led by Deputy Mayor Bridget Early. And this office will ensure that this administration's efforts and policies align with the needs of both employee and employer while working to create a better, stronger, and safer working conditions for all of our workers. We do that in this budget. Now, another pillar of my administration will be to ensure that Chicagoans have access to the tools and services they need to lead healthy lives. And this begins with addressing the mental health needs of our communities by continuing to invest more than $15 million per year in the mental health safety net system while expanding by 75% the number of Chicago Department of Public Health mental health staff working in our public clinics and within our 911 response teams. This budget, this budget also makes critical investments towards aligning our mental health network with the principles of treatment not trauma. With more than doubling the number of staff on the CARE 911 alternate response team, black Chicagoans are the largest group served by both CARE 911 and outpatient mental health providers, making up 43% of the total number of people in both programs. So this large and well-resourced 911 alternate response program will allow us to continue helping the people most affected by disinvestment, expanding the number of neighborhoods that these teams serve, allowing for extended service hours into the evenings and weekends. Through this investment, through this investment, my administration is moving alternate response out of a pilot phase and making it permanent part of how we approach crisis response in the city of Chicago. With care and compassion and not mass incarceration and traumatization, no more for our communities. This budget also builds capacity for another tenant of treatment not trauma, the reopening of additional mental health clinics by continuing funding for our existing clinics. And supporting two additional clinics within existing CDPH spaces. City council last week also voted in support of the creation of a treatment not trauma working group, which over the course of the next year will develop and identify the best methods for expanding city-provided mental health clinic services throughout communities and bringing back our capacity for fully ran, city-run mental health clinics. We are making our city a safer and a more compassionate and healthier place for everyone. That same spirit that this budget furthers my administration's commitment to environmental justice. You know, this summer, we saw some of the most disastrous effects of climate change. Torrential rainfall that flooded homes on the west and south side, southwest sides, and the wildfire smoke that covered our city. And we know that not every Chicagoan and not every neighborhood feels the effects of climate change the same way. The impact of climate change is deeply steeped in inequity. More than a third of the city's communities have at least one census tract that's considered environmental justice neighborhood, which means that these neighborhoods mostly in south and west side communities have a high concentration of industry, are bisected by major highways where pollution and toxic chemicals are a greater threat to the health and safety of our people. Today, I'm happy to announce that this 2024 budget reestablishes the Department of the Environment, which will coordinate our city's environmental and resiliency efforts. In addition to that investment, the FY24 budget also commits $25 million to climate initiatives, including more than $4 million in Chicago's Climate Infrastructure Grant Program, $15 million to decarbonize one-to-four unit homes for eligible low-income Chicagoans, and $6 million in city's composting system. And lastly, we must not forget one of the most simplest but very effective climate investment that we can make, and that's our tree canopy. By the end of next year, we will have planted 55,000 new trees well on our way to our goal of 75,000. In seeking environmental justice, let us not forget about housing justice. Because making investments in affordable housing is another critical and essential focus of my administration. Housing is a human right. And this budget helps secure the right of housing with more than $250 million invested in homelessness supports, including an increase in the city's flexible housing pool and operational supports for our shelter network for the unhoused. Homelessness is up 12% since 2019. And black Chicagoans account for almost 70% of the unhoused population. It is an outrage that one-quarter of renters pay more than half of their paychecks just to make rent with little left over for necessities. And it's an injustice that one in four black students in Chicago public schools experience homelessness at least once during their lives. Advocates say that there are more than 68,000 Chicagoans that are experiencing homelessness at some point throughout the year, including almost 20,000 Chicago public school students. And that is why my administration is committed to passing the Bring Chicago Home ordinance to take this to the voters. Bring Chicago Home will create a sustainable and permanent funding source to facilitate permanent supportive housing and address the problem of homelessness in our city. With this budget, we are also expanding the Department of Housing's home repair program to $10 million and pairing that with more than $12 million in funding to offer critical support to low-income homeowners who are in need of repairs. Additionally, we are making the largest annual investment to date to the home modification program administered by the mayor's office of people with disabilities, ensuring that residents with disabilities can make their homes accessible. These investments will sustain the dream of homeownership for multiple generations of homeowners, stabilizing communities at risk of gentrification. One of the greatest priorities of this administration is making our city a safe place to work and live, to build a business, to buy a home, and to raise a family. So this budget makes investments to increase community safety, including the establishment for the first time ever, the Office of Community Safety within the mayor's office led by Deputy Mayor Garen Gatewood. This new Office of Community Safety will work with vested stakeholders and communities to lead our city's full force of government comprehensive and collaborative community safety strategy. As part of that strategy, we are investing more than $100 million in anti-violence programming, restorative justice for re-entry services, domestic violence and gender-based violence prevention and intervention, and the city's Community Safety Coordination Center. These investments will allow us to do a few things. Expand our partnerships with community-based violence interrupters, support residents who return home from incarceration, and improve support systems for victims, survivors, and offenders to prevent recidivism. We got to do it with some intelligence. And we're taking a smart, data-driven, community-centered approach to safety while also addressing the root causes of violence. I am grateful for the city council's confirmation of Superintendent Larry Snelling. Grateful. Because it's another important step forward in our journey to create a safer Chicago. Superintendent Snelling is a proven leader with decades of experience and the respect of his peers. He's going to reinvigorate our commitment to constitutional policing and full consent decree compliance, which is critical, which is critical. It's critical for the healing of our communities and the relationship between the community and the police department. So together, Superintendent Snelling and I are committed to increasing the number of detectives to the Chicago Police Department to solve major crimes. Seventy detectives have been promoted since I've taken office. And this budget creates 100 additional detective positions, moving us more than halfway towards the goal of 200 detectives that I made a commitment to doing during my campaign. This increased investigative capacity will allow us to hold violent offenders accountable while bringing justice and restoring confidence to impacted residents. We also understand that effective policing requires a community-based lens. One major step in that direction is the increased civilianization of our police force. We are adding just under 400 new civilian positions to CPD to provide aid and support, which will free up officers to perform the law enforcement duties for which they were trained. This budget also invests in data and technology resources as we look to evaluate and improve call time response. We will be intentional in our community safety strategy, deploying not just police officers, but the community, businesses, sister agencies, and the full force of government. but the community, businesses, sister agencies, and the full force of government, because we know that true safety requires this approach. And every investment in youth, education, housing, mental health, and environmental justice layered together for the long term will fulfill our promise to build a better, stronger, safer Chicago. But it is going to take all of us. And one of the most important obligations that we uphold is our responsibility to deliver efficient and effective services with the greatest impact. And through strategic investments, this budget furthers our progress in the lead service line replacement program. Nine of the top 10 Chicago zip codes with the largest percentage, the largest percentages of high lead levels were neighborhoods with the majority of Black and Brown residents. The city has set an ambitious goal to replace all 409,000 lead service lines, the most of any U.S. city. And we're doing this to ensure clean drinking water for every single neighborhood and resident with a priority placed in replacing lead service lines in daycare centers and Black and Latinx communities. In 2024, we will invest more than $53 million to aid this effort, recommitting ourselves to safety for our most vulnerable residents and communities. And one of the best ways we can build the operational capacity in government and provide the most efficient services possible is to invest in our technology infrastructure. And so today, I'm excited to announce that this budget creates a new Department of Technology and Innovation. This is long overdue. To residents and businesses who think that the city's gears churn too slowly or its processes are too cumbersome, this is a critical step in making sure that our government works for you. Better technology means we can process contracts and hire vendors quicker, giving rise to developments that help our communities thrive. And we can enable city departments to innovate and to modernize, spearling economic growth and vitality throughout our entire city. Ultimately, this is an investment in our future, a future that will lead to more accessible, enhanced, and equitable city services. Now, I'm grateful for the financial leadership of this city. It's led by our budget director, Annette Guzman. Thank you for your leadership. Our chief financial officer, Jill Jarawski. And of course, our comptroller, Chase Riwinkle. It's like finding the beard. If you find the beard, you'll find Chase. But this has been an incredible team, the work that you've done to put this budget together. And with this team at the helm, we will continue to make decisions based on sound fiscal policies, including our commitment to reducing our structural budget deficit over time and meeting our pensions and our managing our debt obligations. We're going to do both. This administration is also committed to fiscal responsibility and ensuring that we have the resources to pay for these new investments. We will not repeat the failures of the past by spending money we do not have and bankrupting our future. We also have relied too long on a tax structure that heavily burdens our lowest-income residents and is too reliant on property taxes, fees, and fines and, and rates. We know that 5% an annual raise, if you get one, does not coincide with the property tax raises that have constantly burdened us down. Just doesn't happen that way. We also recognize that a $95 city sticker or a $100 parking ticket weighs more heavily on the family that earns $30,000 a year versus a family that earns $150,000 a year. And that is why this budget proposes expanding the city's utility billing relief program to include three flat buildings and making the administrative debt relief and clear path relief programs permanent. Because these are programs that will help working families get out of the debt and save for the future while also managing and maintaining the city's revenue streams. In a recent study comparing tax burdens in large cities, Chicago families earning $25,000 a year had a total tax burden of 15.4%. And for our families earning $150,000 a year, that tax burden is 11.6%. That family earning $25,000 a year is paying a tax rate that is 33% higher than the family early earning $150,000 a year. We gotta do better, Chicago. We must do better. And that is why this budget holds the line on property taxes and why we will continue to work with all stakeholders to create revenue that weans us from our addiction to the regressive taxation, pushing so many of our working families out of the city of Chicago. And that is why the first step, the first major step in that direction is to bring Chicago home. Now, we will continue to move with competency and compassion and collaboration to find other solutions. And next, I want to talk to you about the important dynamic of pensions in terms of the city and our economic and fiscal health. Our employees seek retirement security through our four pension funds. They do not participate in social security. Rather, they participate in the collective trust that is a pension. Unfortunately, our pensions are currently only 20% funded because of the city's regretful history of neglecting obligations to the retirement security of its workers. But I'm committed to workers and our pensioners. Early in my administration, I established a pension working group that brought together my administration, labor leaders, state partners, city council leaders, and other advocates and experts to tackle the pressing issue ahead of us, meeting our obligations with sustainable funding sources. And since 2020, the required increases in our pension contributions have risen approximately $1 billion. In this budget, we are making an additional supplemental payment of $307 million on top of our required pension payments in 2024 to ensure that we keep the unfunded liabilities within our pension funds from growing. This supplemental payment will help us move quicker to improve the financial health of our funds and lower the cost over the long term. And in the end, we are demonstrating our commitment to ensuring that pension funds reach a point of financial stability and our retirees receive the benefits that they have earned and deserve. In addition to investing in retirement se- security, in Chicago, we are, we use municipal bonds to fund capital improvements and investments in critical infrastructure. Using bonds allows us to spread the cost of these investments over time and over the generations and generations will ultimately benefit. This year's budget includes a payment of approximately $1 billion in the principal amount of debt, which frees up our capacity for investment in priorities such as our lead service line replacement, airport modernization, and other programs, and so much more. And furthermore, we are distributing grants and moving the Chicago Recovery Plan forward, utilizing bond proceeds and American Recovery Plan funding to support community and neighborhood investments, to grow small businesses, to beautify streetscapes, and to invest in mental health and anti-violence programs. We are analyzing and reviewing the projects in the Chicago Recovery Plan to ensure that the investments are targeted to achieve measurable outcomes for our city. Responsibility and accountability are critical to ensuring the success of the plan. Now, this budget and subsequent budgets inevitably hinge on the strength and resiliency of the Chicago economy. And despite macroeconomic headwinds, the outlook of our economy is strong. And in the next year, our economy will continue to be supported by both large-scale and neighborhood events. My administration is committed to igniting tourism and economic vibrancy and engaging all of our neighborhoods throughout this amazing city. And so we have budgeted and we commit $2 million in funding to support neighborhood festivals, bringing funding for such events back to pre-pandemic levels to celebrate the uniqueness of every single community. In addition to large-scale and neighborhood events, major developments and businesses are coming to Chicago in the years ahead. Google is investing $1 billion in the Thompson Center because its workers want to be in Chicago. That investment will not only invigorate our technology sector, but it will also anchor the revitalization of LaSalle Street for the next generation. Other businesses like Invenergy and the Campari Group continue to make investments in our downtown commercial corridors, facilitate high-growth industries like clean energy in Chicago, developments like the expansion of logistics firm, which is Total Quality Logistics, New Horizon Steel, which is the largest Black-owned steel company in Chicago, and the continued growth of the Full-Tim Market District will continue to demonstrate the resiliency of our economy. And finally, to ensure our continued growth and strength, this administration and this city will always promote, market, and praise such vital and precious assets. Our reputation of being a central rail, our air, our transportation hub, our world-class colleges and universities, and cultural amenities, our majestic lakefronts and our parks, the best workers in the world, the best food in the world, the diversity of our economy, all of these assets and more are why we can look forward to many more years of growth and vitality. Now, as I close, I am truly humbled and honored to be standing before you, presenting this budget as our first step to fulfilling promises to invest in people and align our work with my vision for a better, stronger, safer Chicago. As we look ahead to the next steps of this budget process and the future of our city, my administration will continue to be grounded in the principles of co-governance and collaboration. Over the next months, my office will closely work with members of this body to pass a budget that reflects our values. We will continue our community engagement efforts as part of that process, ensuring that the voices and ideas of Chicagoans are heard and adopted in our work. I want to thank the Office of Budget Management, city departments, city staff, residents, and the community partners who helped shape this effort. Let us go forth in this journey together, united by the fact that Chicago is truly the greatest city in the world, and we collectively have the power to make it even greater. This is our moment to finally have a budget that reflects the interests and the values of the people. Today, sisters and brothers, Chicago, I present to you the People's Budget. Thank you. God bless you all, and God bless the greatest freaking city in the world, the city of Chicago.
Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
As referenced in the call for the special meeting today, I provided a resolution to the clerk with the proposed resolution provided for publication and set in the date and time of a necessary hearing on the budget, and I ask for the resolution to be read.
Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution setting public hearing on 2024 budget. Whereas Mayor Brandon Johnson, October 11, 2022, submitted to the city council the executive budget of the city of Chicago for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024. And whereas it is provided by law that at least one public hearing shall be held by the corporate authorities on the budget document, not less than one week after publication thereof in such manner as a corporate authorities may determine and prior to final action thereon. And whereas it is further provided by law that notice of such hearing shall be given by publication in newspaper having general circulation in the city of Chicago not less than one week prior to the time of such hearing. Now therefore, be it resolved that the budget document for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024, submitted by the mayor of the city council, be published in pamphlet form and made available for public inspection to the office of city council and city clerk no later than October 16, 2023. And be it further resolved that the public hearing on said budget document be held by the city.